Good evening. I'd like to call the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee to order, and I'm wondering if Mr. Ford is in the house? Mr. Smith is with him. Good evening. Good evening. Could you check the mics for me to make sure?
Check one, two?
Mr. Ford and Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Mayor Koch, Superintendent Mauvi, members of the school committee, members of the superintendent leadership team, I want to thank you for taking the time to review our 2023-2024 School Improvement Plan. Assistant Principal Ed Smith and I are here to discuss our plan with you. This year, through clear expectations, courageous conversations, observations, and implementations, we will continue to build upon a culture that unites us as one team, empowering us to succeed through efficient, effective, and equitable practices. Our teaching and learning expectations will remain the same: to hold each other accountable, create a sense of belonging, build upon an outstanding curriculum, and reinforce our community, better known as ABC squared. Our students have been challenged as well, which is to be great in all that they do. In creating a welcoming, safe, respectful environment, we encourage our students to be generous and genuine, to be respectful and responsible, to be encouraging, to be ambitious, and to be a team player. Our school improvement plan has been developed in conjunction with the collaborative conference team's recommendation from the December 2022 NEAS visit, as well as Quincy High School's self-reflection report. There were three priority areas identified from the NEAS visit last December. Those areas include developing the vision of a graduate, curriculum planning or course alignment, as well as a tiered monitoring support system for our students. In addition to focusing on those three priority areas, as part of this year's school improvement plan, each department developed goals to maximize the full learning potential of our students so they excel both academically and socially. Before I speak more about the plan, I'm gonna turn it over to our assistant principal, Ed Smith, to review last year's reflections and give us a NEAS update.
Good evening. Tonight I have the opportunity to share with you the data and goals reflection from last year, starting on page six of our plan. A special thanks to Kim Pierce, Roger Bakary, Elliot Cullum, Brendan Palomo, Megan Murray, and Dr. T., who make up the QHS Data and Assessment Team along with me. Our focus last year was to identify students and course sections that struggled on the MCAS, recognize weaknesses, and assist teachers adjust their instruction. While we did identify and provide support for our lowest-performing students, we also identified some of our CCP students who met or exceeded expectations, and then held student conferences and encouraged them to take honors classes in the future. This year, we're turning our attention to the accountability report and plan to present and educate staff and set targets and goals for the future. While there remain many areas in which we can improve, overall, we are pleased with the progress made in the direction Quincy High School is headed. A few data points to note include: The QHS students improved on the 2023 ELA MCAS from five to 12% of students exceeding expectations. On the math MCAS, we decreased the number of students earning not-meeting expectations from nine to seven percent. And on the biology MCAS, 50% of our students met or exceeded expectations, which is two percentage points higher than 2022 and three points higher than this year's state average. You will notice we have a robust goal reflection this year, which coincides with our mission of ABC squared and being accountable for everything we do at Quincy High School. Broken into two initiatives, we made progress or met eight of our 12 goals as part of our academic initiative. Within our social, emotional, and equity initiative, we met or partially met nine of our 14 goals. While the most recent vocal data outlines areas in need of growth, we are proud of the work that's being done by the QHS staff, our Culture and Climate Committee, and through our new student advisory period this year. As we turn to this year's specific goals and action steps, we decided to have our departmental goals and action steps be organized parallel to our NEAS accreditation tasks, as Mr. Ford shared. This round of NEAS began in the fall of 2021 with surveys of students, families, and staff. A self-reflection report was written with contributions and approval from all QHS faculty and staff, which was submitted to NEAS for review prior to the collaborative conference in December of 2022. After the visit, the NEAS team and QHS staff together identified the three priority areas of growth, and those goals include: Developing a vision of the graduate that includes transferable skills and knowledge, understandings, and dispositions necessary for future success; Develop a written curriculum in consistent format that includes units of study with guiding essential questions, concepts, content, and skills, integrating the school's vision of the graduate; And establishing protocols and procedures for student referrals by developing a uniform process for identifying and supporting students who need interventions and supports. The accreditation process will culminate with our decennial visit in December of 2024 with a review of our progress towards these priority areas. Now turn it back over to Mr. Ford, who will go over this year's departmental goals.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Starting on page 25, each department developed a measurable goal centered toward student achievement. In order to achieve their goal, the approach will continue to be data-driven with effective professional development and execution, collaboration, goal-setting, and meaningful student support. We will collect relevant data, analyze our findings, make appropriate recommendations, and implement the necessary strategies to increase student engagement and achievement while improving our school's culture. Many of our department goals focus on one of the three priority areas for NEAS, such as curriculum alignment and tiered monitoring intervention systems. In addition to NEAS priority areas and department goals implementation, we also launched a One School, One Book reading program. This program is designed to create a shared reading experience with our high school community and allow students, teachers, and families to have conversations about this reading. Each student in grades nine through 12 and staff were given a copy of the book, "On the Come-Up," by Angie Thomas, to read over the summer. Each department throughout their first semester will pick a theme and discuss this book with their students. We also had a staff discussion in small groups during our staff's opening day meeting. This One School, One Book really sets the stage to have those courageous conversations in a proactive manner, rather than be reactive to what's going on in society, in our world. And we found as though having these discussions right away, using examples through the book, was a great way to continue to build upon our community overall. We also added 45-minute advisory period to our schedule during the half-days each month. This advisory period is an opportunity for students and teachers to connect and participate in activities that are designed to highlight the richness and diversity of Quincy High School. Our Culture and Climate Committee, who, Edie Boynton, Madison Davis, Mercedes Guerra, Stephanie Jones, NeNe Meltzer, Jackie Niosi, James Traving, and our team leader, Sarah Levine, meet weekly to create lesson scripts for our teachers to have with the following topics for the year. We started the year with community building. We have Hispanic Heritage Month, mental health awareness. We have a substance awareness script ready to go for this month, study habits, Black History Month, Women's History Month, ARAB American Heritage Month, and our Asian American and Pacific Islander Month, all to be part of our advisories throughout the year. Our extended-day offerings, starting on page 41, are intended for students to connect both academically and socially outside their regular school hours. We have over 40 active clubs that our students participate in. Clubs are finding ways now to integrate during the school day, which is awesome, and they also have a heavy social media presence highlighting our outstanding activities we offer throughout the day. For this year, some of our new clubs include the Chess Club, the Cyber Security Club, the Electronics Project Club, our Muslim Students Association Club, and our Quincy High School Step Club, all started this year. On page 44, you will see, "Family Engagement and Communication is a Priority for Us." It's really essential in how we operate here at Quincy High School. Really want to thank the district for providing us with the Smores software. It's a messaging opportunity to send out creative messages to staff and the community. I use it a lot, and I'm very thankful for that. The Roll Hats Weekend is in our second year of success right now, even though it's a little rainy out there during the weekend. But really seeing our community come together in that sense of pride of Quincy High School, again, is something that is a staple of what we're trying to do overall. We thank you for the continuation of having a Portuguese-speaking student and family liaison in the building full-time for us. That's been really another opportunity to communicate with families and with our students throughout the day, and it's been extremely helpful having her there. We will continue to have our President's Community Bulletin to really highlight the awesome things that are happening at Quincy High School for members in the community to see on a monthly basis. Again, with our back-to-school nights and parent conferences, college nights, opportunities for families to know and understand what exactly is going on in our school. And, you know, our early college newsletters that are out there as we continue to expand early college is another way to communicate with families. Our school demographics on page 47. So we know at Quincy High School, we have just over 1,450 students. 56% are low-income families, 20% special education students, and 12.7% are English learners. We have over 464 that enrolled in advanced or higher-level courses. All right, and they're also the breakdown of our demographics on that page 47 as well. Over the next two to three years, our goal is to increase representation of our marginalized students in honors and advanced-level courses by providing opportunities for mentoring, advising, and tutoring. And this effort will be in collaboration with other school-wide academic initiatives. On page 50 is our facilities, like improvement needs. We want to first start off by thinking what has been done over the past year. We're happy to say that the lighting in the cafeteria and the hallways have been upgraded with all LED lighting. The all-house lighting in the Adams Hall have been replaced, which is great. The interactive sign that's outside our building, again, another way to communicate with the community what's going on, has been fixed and operating flawlessly at this point. And we had several upgrades to our audio system in the cafeteria and the gym, so to be able to, in those large spaces, to be able to communicate to the folks in the gym and the cafeteria has been extremely helpful. As far as areas of need, we definitely need an upgrade in our security camera system overall in the building. That's a huge need for us right now. Our HVAC continues to run inconsistently. Our all-house lighting in the auditorium kind of flickers at times, and that could be a distraction, obviously, with performances like last night, just the season. It's something worth note. An additional bike rack, right now, may not be useful, but as the weather gets a little warmer, as a way for our students to communicate, to have a place where students could put their bikes, will be there. And then there's some interior door replacements that are needed in the gym, auditorium, and the president's cafe. This has been a total team effort in developing and implementing this year's school improvement plan. Empowering staff and students to help shape the direction of our school community is our main focus. Again, our goal is to be great in all that we do. We have been challenged to be efficient, effective, and equitable in our practice, and we want to emphasize that we will hold each other accountable, create a sense of belonging, establish a culturally responsive curriculum, and build a positive sense of community. And to everyone that's a part of Quincy High School community, roll hats. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford and Mr. Smith. And before we ask further questions, I just wanted to say that all of the facility requests are gonna be moved right into the Facility Subcommittee Meeting, so we're not gonna really talk about them tonight unless we have some particular concerns. But would anybody like to address Mrs. Cahill?
I just have one question. I say that all the time, then I end up having like five. What's the high school criteria to be placed into an advanced class? Do we base it on their scores in their placement the year before? Or if they were in advanced classes in middle school, you know, how do we kind of gauge when we put someone in an advanced class? They choose to be in it? Sometimes they can be, and sometimes they can't, you know, they might want to. So how do we do that?
A lot of it comes from recommendations, right? So if you're talking about a middle school student coming to the high school, right? So the expectation in any grade that students and teachers are working in conjunction with one another and have that recommendation to go to a certain level, right? And so a lot of times where if a student is recommended for a particular level, and they feel as though whether they want to be advanced or they want to drop down to a level, we do have a series of steps that we want that student and/or family to go through, whether it's through the teacher and the department chair are involved before a recommendation, and the final steps go from there. So as far as there is, you know, we would say students would need a 90 or above, but depending on the situation with a particular student, let's say they have an 85, right, you know, something like that, and they really feel as though I want to be in that advanced level, then we have conversations with that student, with the department chair, to ultimately determine to get there. I will say that, you know, we're really trying to push more and more students to those advanced levels. You know, some students, you know, that we feel as though have the skill sets necessary to be at that advanced level. We're really trying to work and support them in getting there. Some of them are, at times, may be a little reluctant to go to that advanced level because of fear of, I don't know if I'm gonna do well. So we try to provide those supports and those reassurances that we will support you along the way to get there. So we're really continuing to push. Actually, one of the things that we will implement pretty soon, since the grades came out, is really honoring our honor roll students. We have close to 900 students that made the honor roll this first term, and so we want to be able to celebrate them. They usually go on to Quincy Sun, but we're also gonna have posters or flyers throughout the school with their names on that so we can have other students see that, A, you are being celebrated for success. So, you know, we want to encourage more and more students on that high level.
So I guess, when I see some of the populations that we maybe want to push up and get them engaged in some advanced classes, because, like you said, I think a lot of times, some of our families, they have, students have families behind them that are pushing them and supporting them, making sure that they can get into an advanced class and do well. Maybe some students don't have that at home or that support, but the school maybe thinks that, you know, they can do it. So I'm wondering if there are some students that we can kind of nudge to get up to that next level and support them where we think that they're not being represented, you know?
Correct.
So that would be something that I think, you know, be a way to get some of these kids in advanced classes.
And truth be told of that, too, I think the other element is, you know, as we're talking about, like, not only the ability to do the work, but the comfort level at the higher levels, right? And so, you know, some of our, you know, students, students of color, marginalized students, right, because, you know, there is a misrepresentation at the higher level, right? Just really getting a sense of, you know, community, feeling a sense of belonging as they're making their way into those higher levels, right? So the more students that we can encourage to that level, right, the more our Black and Brown students that they see there, right? That's another attraction besides the skills and ability to be there. And so that's something we really want to highlight and promote, that, okay, you're not in isolation. You're not the only one, you know, getting to this higher level, that there are others that also could be there as well. And so the more that we have at the higher level, the more I see the representation of people that may look like me also in this particular class, by as well as far as them being able to feel more and more comfortable in taking some of these higher classes. So we're taking all of that in consideration as well as we move forward.
Do you have a lot of students that want to be in advanced classes and that we can't put, you know, that we can't place? Or do you find you have more students in advanced classes that want to drop down because they don't like the rigor or the level of work?
In comparison to both of them, there is more, the students that want to go to a high, the advanced level, it isn't because of placement that they're not at the advanced level at this point. It's not, we don't have room, you know, for those at that particular level, right? So we'll try to find ways. Some of them, the folks that want the advanced level, many of them have five, six, seven, eight, you know, classes, like they'll have six or seven AP classes that they're trying to all fit that in. And that's the ones that we're really, in some ways, trying to help them balance that out a little bit because it might be too much of an undertaking in one year to take seven AP classes at one time, right? And so, you know, but the ones that, you know, may be in our CCP classes, and we try to find, okay, I'm pretty good at English, right? And try to nudge them along in English a little bit. You know, in some ways, it's like, okay, who's in there? Am I with friends? And so we try to get away from the friend aspect when we deal with scheduling overall. And so when you have students that have been used to a certain level, right, for a couple of years and kind of know who's in that particular level, now we're trying to nudge them to go to a higher level, and they may be in classes with students they're not particularly used to being in classes with, that is the piece that we're still trying to work out a little bit as they're, you know, trying to advance their skills and ability and things.
That's great. And my, I think I'll leave it to the rest of my colleagues, but my only other thing is, go presidents.
Absolutely.
That's the mask. I like the roll hats. It's a great community thing, but we are the presidents.
Mr. Santoro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have a very unique schedule. It's a very hard thing to pull off, I know. Especially when we have vocational kids trying to get the requirements for college and making sure that we can pull that off. But another great thing you had is team time. Is that still happening?
Yes.
You were able to pull it off?
Yes, we do have team this year.
Thank you.
More teachers involved in team this year than we have the past few years.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Gattuso.
Thank you. Welcome. Two comments, three questions. So first of all, congratulations on the improvements that you made over last year based on the data that you shared with us. I want to say I thought it was a great array of extended-day offerings as well as community slash parental engagement. You know, those were great offerings. Three questions. So the incident data that you gave was just raw numbers. Is there anything that you can say relative to the trends of incidents? Did the number of incidents go up? Were there certain categories that changed?
Quite honestly, I think the number of incidents are going down, right? I think for, you know, in comparison to things that we had to deal with last year overall, having the hiring of our deans now, we have a full slate of four deans that really have a good handle of our students. You know, our focus, when we talk about ABC squared, it's not just a slogan, you know, overall. It's like, when we talk about accountability of everyone, creating that sense of belonging, right, taking a look at our curriculum and community, that's all part of the reason why, from a discipline and incident perspective, things have gone down to a certain extent, because staff are more vigilant, right? We're asking students to hold them accountable a little bit more. You know, the biggest thing, having to deal with duties this year, we're trying to be very intentional on where, like, from a staff perspective, as far as bathroom duties and lunch duty. One thing I didn't mention, I didn't know if you was gonna go there about the schedule a little bit, is that we went to four lunches this year as a major impact. As far as what happens between 11:00 to 1:00, there are less kids in the cafeteria during lunch. It just kind of seems calmer and peaceful, and students are able to, you know, get their lunch, kind of relax during that time. We still have students that's ready to go to class, which is surprising to me. I would've took the whole, you know, time off if I could. But, you know, for the most part, it's great to see our students kind of feel that safety, right? And so I know we had some couple of things that happened, you know, earlier this year that really, from the outside looking in, is questionable, okay, what's going on at Quincy High School? But folks that have been in the building, folks that have kind of been around, the climate and culture of the building has changed, has shifted. And mentioning, again, it was great, like, as far as we had Spirit Week right before Thanksgiving, probably the most participated Spirit Week from students and staff all the way around. The buzzing of social media, like, a lot of our clubs not only run, but they have a huge, especially Instagram, presence, and folks are just really commenting, like, so whether you're part of that club or sport or not, like, once you're integrated and seeing what's going on in Quincy High School, there's a lot of great things that are happening. So, you know, we hear a lot of outside noise of things that people might think is happening in the building, but if you come in the building and if you really get a chance to see what we're doing in the building, we're functioning great. And the incidents that we do have are manageable. They're regular high school. I'm in a group chat with principals in the South Shore, all the Patriot League principals and things like that. And, you know, stuff that we're dealing with right now, every school, really in the Commonwealth, dealing with the same issues, right? And that's, there is less and less of, this is unique to Quincy High School, more so than, okay, these are high school issues that we're dealing with across the board, and how do we handle those together?
The bathroom incidents, is that managed better? I mean...
I mean, you know, I hate to, not gonna want to bring things up, but, you know, there were certain things that happened in the bathrooms a year ago that I had to write several emails to families about that isn't happening this year, right? And so, you know, again, I think having more supervision of the bathroom, do things happen in the bathroom? It does, right, you know, and we're really trying to monitor that. I think with our, the adoption of a diversion program has been so students aren't, you know, if we talk about, like, vaping and things like that in the bathrooms, like, that is still happening. But now, you know, not only, like, students are being suspended or whatever else, we have a diversion program where they are required to meet with our health interventionists and really go through, there's a four-week program that they have to go through with TED Talks, podcasts, resources, literature on why, you know, vaping is an unhealthy choice. And then they have to write a reflection on that as well. So there are additional steps that we're requiring for our students if and when they make the decision to vape on school grounds.
The vocal data, there was a lot of things to be encouraged about there, but there were two that I want to talk about, which concerned me, which was, one in four said they preferred to stay home because they felt unsafe, and the same percentage point felt that, I don't know what the terminology was, about sexual harassment. I don't know if you have any thoughts or observations about that.
What was the second one you said?
Students who are sexually harassed at my school, for example, bothered by unwanted touching or indecent name-calling, 24%. And I've stayed at home or avoided school because I did not feel safe at my school. Again, one in four.
So last year, again, if we call it what it is, between, like, right out the gate, we had a bomb threat, right? So we had the bomb threat. We had the graffiti that, you know, not only happened with students, but then it talked about the character of the principal as well during that time. We had a couple of fights that took place that were egregious enough that, you know, being recorded and things like that last year. So if a student's taking a test afterwards and saying, you know, one of the MCAS tests happened right after one of the incidents happened. So if you ask me a couple of days after a major fight that happened, if you feel safe or not, I'm gonna say I feel unsafe too, right, you know, during that time. And so we recognize that. We recognize the vocal data as a whole, you know, from one year to the next, that it took a little dip in certain areas. But we were really holding firm on the foundation that we've been laying, right? And believing in what we're doing as far as building a culture, right? And again, we're peeling back the onion a little bit. There's things that's being revealed as we're going through this process that is gonna take a couple of years to do. But, you know, the sense of, you know, as we did our Culture and Climate But, you know, the sense of, you know, as we did our culture and climate survey last year as well, we're going to do that every two years to kind of get more information, you know, from our students and staff. That's how the advisory period, you know, started. That's how really the One School Read started, right? Is through the information that we've received. If you look at who we hired this year, right? So, there was three main buckets from our culture and climate survey that both students and staff talked about. Number one was as far as diversification of our staff. I'm, I'm proud to say that we did that, right? You're looking at who we hired for the past year. And we had, you know, a couple, quite a few hirings this, this year through retiring and everything else. But our staff has diverse, diversified, even as recent as a couple of weeks ago. So, we're happy about that. The staff talked about needing more resources, right? And so, we're continuing to provide those resources in our advisory period overall. Though, they're, from our culture and climate committee, those are scripted. So, our staff does not have to, um, in any way, create lessons on those topic areas that I read earlier. That information is given to them to go along. And we've been doing, trying to do community surf, uh, circles, restorative justice circles for the past three years. And that's embedded in our advisory period each month now. So, when we ask students to go on a circle, whether it's community building or it's from a discipline perspective, our students now are able to do that in a, in a, in a way that they're, they're starting to get used to that now, right? In comparison before. So, we're, we're excited in the direction that we're going. It is going to take some time to get there, but I think the foundation is laid for us to be successful.
And then the last question is about the annual dropout rate. There was some encouraging data in there, but there were two, I think it was students with disabilities and African-American black students. It's, it, it, the language says decline, but it looks like they went up.
What page are you looking at again? I'm sorry.
Uh, fifty-five.
Fifty-five?
Yeah. It says reason decline.
Yep, so, the students with disabilities and, um, uh, last year, so, it, they had one, it looks like it went from one point seven. I don't, I don't know how to do a point seven for a student, but, you know, so, went from one student to two, um, as far as that's concerned. So, that we did decline there. Where I thought you were going at, which we're excited about, is our EL, and former EL students where it's, the, the rate was thirteen, close to thirteen percent. Um, and that dropped down to four percent. And so, we know specifically with our EL department, we brought back up our EL intervention team that we meet ea- each Tuesday. And we talk about our, you know, really trying to find supportive ways with our EL students overall. That's something that i- is a major focus of, of all of ours for this upcoming year, particularly for mine, and really looking help for the district when it comes to our EL, uh, population and supporting them. But to say that, you know, you have close to twelve percent of the EL population, close to thirteen, that dropped out of school, now we're able to keep them in the building. It went from thirteen percent to four percent, right? That's a major, um, major shift in a year's time. And we still got work to do, you know, from there. So, I definitely hear, what you're saying, as far as students with disabilities, that, that one other student, you're right, you know, we don't like anybody to drop out. But on the, on the other side, to, to see that major shift in our EL population, which is in some ways our most neediest, um, uh, group of students because of, you know, the, the several challenges that they are coming to us with, for us to support overall, on that, we're excited about the process, the program and the progression that we are with our EL students.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gatcho. I just have a, an observation and possibly a question. Mr. Santoro and I were lucky enough to be able to sit in on the NIOSC visit last year after the team had been through your building. We met with them. And to hear what they really highlighted about that was amazing, about the ama- amazing technical and academic offerings in the building. The schedule was amazing, the class size was amazing, and the extended day offerings, they said, were really amazing. Uh, and, and I can speak to what you're talking about for students. I've spent some time doing food waste. And with the eighteen volunteers from the Garden Club and the other people from the community who've been in there, there isn't one of them who doesn't love being with the kids. They're not crazy about some of the other stuff, but the kids have never, ever, ever been a problem with anybody in the building. It's amazing, it really is amazing, so. And I, I mean, I was in high school a long time. I thought it was going to be a little worse than it was, but the kids are trem- tremendous. But my question is, going back to Mr. Gatcho's point, on page fifty-nine, there is one of the vocal things that I'm concerned about. And it's, I feel comfortable reaching out to teachers or counselors for emotional support if I need it. And I think that what you're doing with the Student Advisory Committee and the tiered support is you're addressing that or trying to address that?
Yes.
And that's what it looked like to me, because that was a big concern of mine. I, I mean, the other stuff happens, but if the kids don't feel they can talk about it. So, I love that. Who's actually doing, who's not, who's doing the student advisory periods with the kids? Is it homeroom teachers or is it?
It's all homeroom teachers, right? So, we're, we're trying to build that up a little bit more. You know, homeroom kind of been like a holding, you got to school great, now let's go, right? So, we're trying to, especially homeroom for four years, right? You have students that are going to be with the, the same group of students and teacher, right? So, let's find a way to kind of build a relationship from there overall. And, and, you know, again, that's why I'm so excited, not only about the advisory, but, you know, when we talk about Spirit Week, when we talk about the Roll Hats Weekend, what, things of that nature, is that students are able to kind of see their teacher outside the realm of teaching their content, right? The advisory period is a great opportunity. There are different topics that brought up already where a, a, a teacher kind of let their hair down a little bit, right? Kind of share a little bit more about who they are in that, in that particular moment, right? And so, the goal would be, you know, as we continue to progress in, in, in find ways to, to get more involvement with our staff, with our students in extracurricular stuff or during the school day, that students will now see a sense of, oh, okay, yeah, I, I, I can, I have this person now I can go to and kind of go from there. So, um, we're really trying to bridge that gap and trying to be creative in what we offer overall. I'm, I'm happy to see the number of staff that are now involved with, you know, the clubs and activities. Yeah, it's student kind of led and driven, but each club needs an advisor. And so, there's a, you know, club, with the process, a student would come to, to me, say, I want to new, find a new club. I said, you have to find an advisor first. And then, how does this, how is this club really beneficial for the Quincy High community? And so, we kind of have them go through a series of, of questions that they have to answer in order for that start, the club to start. So, um, and, and the teachers kind of be, being involved in that whole process, being, uh, being involved in, um, club fairs, whether in, in the building, the Roll Hats Weekend, we'll have a club fair kind of showing up next Monday, the eleventh, when our eighth grade open house opens, another opportunity to display what we do. And, and our staff is a part of that, right? So, we're very grateful for that.
And so, my, my last thing, or two things. The students, the formal student, um, support interventions. I was really excited to read about it, but I was a little disappointed that the goal's not going to be accomplished until next December. But I assume you're putting it in place and not?
Yes.
It's starting, it's starting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's why, I just wanted to make sure that you weren't just planning for a year.
Correct, correct.
Didn't think you were. And the President's Community Bulletin, it's not on Facebook. I looked, where is that?
Um, so, it's, it's sent, it should be on the website. And it's also kind of sent out on a monthly basis to, to the, the families and communities and things like that.
Thank you very much. Motion to approve the plan by Mr. Santoro, submitted by Mrs. Cahill. You guys are all set, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Yep, have a good night.
Ms., Ms. Maurerio? Maurerio, how should?
Hi, everyone. You ready for me?
We are ready.
Great, well, can you hear me okay? Hi, everyone, good evening. I want to thank you for your time. You'll shift gears now from high school to elementary. I, again, I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank you for the time that you spent reviewing the school improvement plan for Atherton How. Any opportunity that I have to talk about Atherton How, the students, the staff, the work that we're doing is welcome. So, I'm glad to be here. For this presentation, I wanted to share a few reflections from last year's school improvement plan, as well as look ahead into the school improvement plan. And I'd also like to make sure that there's time for any questions that you have. So, you probably know, I, I do like to highlight this. You know, we're the smallest elementary school here in Quincy. We have nineteen classes, twelve general education classes, K to five. And seven of the nineteen classes are substantially separate programs. One transitional kindergarten program in six classes is part of the citywide language development program. I always find it important to acknowledge the breakdown of our enrollment as it illustrates the amount of special education students at each grade, particularly the number of those students participating in district and statewide assessments. Our goals and action steps in the ac- in the school improvement plan reflect a collaborative effort in planning between general education and special education. To support our caseload of special education students, we were able to welcome an additional guidance counselor to our staff this year. And I want to thank you, school committee members, for that budget consideration last year and to the superintendent's leadership team for their support in recognizing the changing needs of enrollment and the important role of student support. Our student support team, including our guidance teams, school psychologists, service providers, as well as our academic support staff, teachers, paraprofessionals, all work so cohesively together. And the reflections in the school improvement plan, as well as the goals for this year, are a direct result of that considerable collaboration and intentional planning of a remarkable staff that come to school each and every day and do all they can to make every student feel welcome, safe, and cherished. I know that's my report, but I'm so pleased to see that same feedback from our students in the spring vocal survey. Last year, we set academic goals to increase student proficiency as measured by M-class for reading, MAP for reading and math and science, and MCAS for reading, math, and science. I'm happy to report, we met part of our school-wide goal for ELA and math last year. As you can read in the goal analysis, students in grades two through five had a goal to demonstrate positive growth in reading and map as, as measured by their MAP RIT score from the fall to the spring. All grades two through five met or exceeded their RIT growth goal. In addition, the number of our K through two students considered at risk decreased as measured by the M-class. This year, we continue to use MAP to measure proficiency. However, we're excited to be using a new report that MAP offers, the School Profile Achievement Report. These are very user-friendly, they are digital. You can drill down in them to see which students are where in projected growths. For example, if you look at page ten, on the first page of the ELA goal, you'll see a snapshot of our beginning of the year achievement reports included. I have a copy here. I don't know if you have a color copy of the school improvement plan. I didn't have access to a color printer, but I used markers just to give you an idea of what our teachers see and what these data reports look like. These are very timely, students take assessment data, and within twenty-four hours, these reports are able to be generated. It's helpful to see data like this, percentage of students on track, percentage of students at risk. You can look at this by school, by grade, by class, by teacher. We use this instruction in so many ways. We're using it to set our goals and daily instruction. Last year, we did add an additional goal of raising proficiency by using the MCAS. At each tested grade, we were looking to increase students' earning proficiency by ten percent as compared to spring twenty-twenty-two. I know, Ms. Lebo, you had appreciated the rigorous goal, and I agreed. It was rigorous, but with our projected MAP scores, positive signs of recovery throughout the district, throughout the state, and positive growth, we felt it was attainable. While we did not meet the goal entirely, entirely, our analysis has really helped us fine-tune continuing to use MCAS as a measure for this school year. Our tested third graders showed a four percent increase in proficiency as compared to two thousand twenty-two on the ELA MCAS. And our fifth graders showed a six percent increase in proficiency as compared to two thousand twenty-two on the math MCAS. However, at each of the other grade levels tested, there was not an increase in proficiency. We looked really carefully at this. There's a lot of great reports that we like looking at, that MCAS is able to generate, standards reports. The greatest disparities between our students with the district and the state seem to actually be in the selected response questions, formerly known as multiple choice questions. There really wasn't a standard in math or ELA that stood out that was really solidly a strength or an area of concern. Writing at all grades for ELA was solid and at the district or state level, which we were really pleased about, but the selected response was an area of need, both for ELA and math. So, you'll see, we've built in some important action steps to increase the percentage of points earned on selected response items for math and ELA. Although we did not meet our school-wide goal for science, we actually celebrate our results in science the loudest. We had indicated time as an area of focus using MAP and MCAS's measures. Our science scores have historically been lower than the district and the state, and we had been creating important action steps to create more time, such as school-wide initiatives, specific planning time for science, extended day opportunities, highlighting science on the morning announcements. Both grade four and five set a goal to increase their average MAP score by seven RIT points from fall to spring. Grade five met their goal of seven RIT points, however, grade four missed the goal by point one point. We were also looking to increase students' earning proficiency on the MCAS by five percent as compared to the, um, spring twenty-twenty-two MCAS. Fifty-two percent of our fifth graders earned proficiency as compared to forty-eight percent the year before. So, while we just missed our goal by one percent, we are pleased to continue to see this increase in proficiency. We also are pleased to see that our proficiency level this past spring was eleven percent higher than the state's level proficiency. We will continue to focus on instructional learning time in the area of science to maintain and increase our proficiency levels in this area and continue to aim to be at or above the state proficiency level. I'd like to also use a minute, if I could, to highlight here as well that this is a fifth grade test. Out of our fifth, fifth graders tested forty, they were, there were forty-five of them. Seventeen of those students were students in our substantially separate classes, or thirty-eight percent of our fifth grade. These proficiency levels are a true testament to the collaboration of teams in the delivery of intentional and meaningful action steps. For this year, as you can see, we will focus on both MAP and MCAS as measures for growth in ELA, math, and science. And we will also use M-class as a measure for the primary grades or K to three in reading. We're committed to our action steps and to work diligently as a dedicated school staff to help each student make progress in all areas. Below the action steps in the school improvement plan, there are a few pictures for each goal highlighting important action steps that are already well underway in our first term of this school year. As you look at the pictures, you may be wondering why you see a coffee bean as part of an action step for our fourth goal of increasing the experiences students have that promote their personal go- growth in social, emotional health and well-being. Each year, as some of you know, and maybe remember, we identify a school-wide book to weave in to our morning announcements, our school-wide assemblies, our grade-level community meetings. This year, the book is John Gordon's, The Coffee Bean for Kids. It's a great story. John Gordon is a really great author. John Gordon is a really great author. We read The Energy Bus for Kids a couple of years ago. Really kind of simple messages that are really relevant and applicable at all grades. We do a lot with his work. So this is just a nice, powerful message to help students see the powerful way they can impact the environment around them, deal with challenges, and come, that come their way, and be a positive influence. So again, I thank you for your time and attention, and would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you so much. Mr. Santoro.
Thank you. Just to let you know, all the numbers aside, your children love you and your building. Your parents love you. They don't want to leave you, just to let you know.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santoro. Ms. Cahill?
Yeah, I don't really have much to say, but thank you for the work that you're doing. We appreciate it, and as Mr. Santoro said, so does your whole community, so thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Guttrow.
Similar sentiments, but so on the vocal survey, a couple of things stood out. The, just the numbers, where students said they felt safe, they were happy at school, they feel respected, and then 100% of students said that teachers and students worked together to stop bullying, which really impressed me, you know? I mean, I love that number. The only one on the other side that I looked at that says only 45% read books that include people similar to me, and you mentioned the school book. I don't know if you want to talk about that.
Sure, yeah, and that was actually kind of online from the year before as well. And, you know, we feel like even, I will actually look forward to, hopefully, similar questions will be on the survey this coming spring. I will look forward to those results, because we have put a lot of intentional action steps last year. Our DEI team, in addition to doing a school-wide book, we had a book each month that we also highlighted. Our library teacher did lessons where we were very mindful of just intentionally including books, you know, that highlighted students of all cultures around the world. We read this, you know, the story where we met students from all countries. We also are in our first full year of implementation of the CKLA program, which is so rich with just great, authentic literature that brings in so many great nonfiction stories and books and beautiful, beautiful resources that we feel confident that is going to increase that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hoobley.
Thank you. Mr. Guttrow actually just spiked a question that I had. When we talked to the students about books with students who look like them, do we ask the students what a student in a book who would look like them would look like, so that we have an idea of, because there are a lot of students that come from homes that are not just one thing that would look like them, one aspect?
Yeah.
So do we, we ask them what they're looking for, that they would be looking to see?
That's actually a great question, and it even came to my mind a couple of weeks ago. We are part of a little study with Boston versus Bullies. They are out of Boston University, and we've had them in doing some, there's some guest speakers that come in. It's a great program. We've had it for a few years. And so we're in a pilot right now to see the effectiveness of their lessons. So we're actually in a control group, so we had to have our fifth graders respond to a survey online at the beginning of the school year, ask very similar questions like that. And I was in there facilitating the survey, and one of the fifth graders asked, what does that question mean?
Yeah.
And it made me think, like, that is a question that they see, you know, and when they take the vocal survey, that's part of, it comes right after an MCAS session. You know, we can't read those, we can't talk about that with them. So I'm glad you brought that up, because I think more work of just even talking to students about when we see questions like that, you know, just to be more explicit. And we've been more mindful of even just, you know, it's not even just cultural, but, you know, talking about families that are different, you know? And we read a story last year, we had a March Madness story with, you know, books continued on, and we had like our final winner, you know, when it was about a boy who came from a big hockey family. But this boy, and so, you know, he was getting his skates, he was so excited, his family wanted to get him on the ice and, you know, get on the hockey team, and they loved it. And he wanted to be a figure skater. And, you know, there are many students that were relating to that, you know, and he was feeling ashamed, didn't want to kind of show that this is what he wanted to do. And so we talked so much about that as a school, and that was our big winner, you know, and I think it was wonderful in the Howsonet community, you know, that that was the winner of the book, of the whole March Madness. So different, you know, families are different, so many things, but that intentional kind of instruction about kind of what we're doing and making sure, you know, that they're feeling like they're represented.
Yeah, exactly. I would just hate us to go out and buy a whole bunch of books that we felt were what represented, and then it wasn't hitting the mark of what made a student feel like they were represented.
Every different school has so many different representations in their school, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Which makes me wonder about the question, Mrs. Hoobley, because I could look at it as, is there any other redhead in this? I'm a redhead, I don't see a redhead there. So you don't really know, you know, I'm kind of chubby, I don't see any chubby people on that.
Right.
You know, so it's really a kind of a, this question doesn't mean quite as much to me as it used to, now that she said that.
Specific.
So it's really, you have to...
The fifth grader asked me a few weeks ago, I thought about the vocal survey, I said, what a good question, you know? He didn't really know what he was answering.
Well, thank you for pointing that out. On your data, I'm so glad you were ambitious, because your data is very impressive, it really is very, very impressive. And your class size is amazing, and as to Mr. Santoro's point, the vocal survey is incredible, and the kids love you and the community loves you. And so I couldn't be any happier than to look at this plan again and see you continuing. I love the fact that you're doing both MAP and MCAS, because there's been some questions so far this year in these plans that, like, MAP is saying somebody's high in vocabulary, MCAS is saying somebody's, the same person's low in vocabulary. It's a little, to make sure that there really is some value, I'm sure there is, but make sure there's enough value in doing both, because I really prefer MAP. Motion to accept by Mr. Santoro, seconded by Mrs. Cahill. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good evening, Mr. Hennessy.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
You can...
Good evening.
...see with your plan.
Good evening. I am Jim Hennessy, the proud principal of the Wallaston Elementary School. This evening, I look forward to reflecting on our 2022-2023 school improvement plan, and I'm very excited to share our 2023-2024 school improvement plan. Before I begin, I just want to take this opportunity to thank each of you for your dedication to our students, to me, to the members of this committee, Mayor Coke, Superintendent Malvi, to Assistant Superintendent Perkins, and to all the members of the SLT. On behalf of the Wallaston School community, I want to take this opportunity to express our sincere appreciation for your constant support and for always putting Quincy students first. We are appreciative of the many programs, resources, and staffing opportunities that you continually provide, but we are most appreciative for your commitment to maintaining class sizes that promote optimal student learning year after year. I, of course, also need to thank our teachers and our staff. Every day, I have the chance to witness their dedication to our students, their commitment to high standards, and their ability to create a positive learning environment for all. We so greatly appreciate all of our students, and it continues to be an honor to watch them learn and grow each day within the walls of our building. We are also so grateful for our parents and guardians. We truly believe that our parents and guardians are our partners, and we are very fortunate to have such a strong partnership with our families and a very supportive PTO. Last year, we conducted a family feedback survey for our, for our parents. We want them to know that their input is welcomed and appreciated. The results of the survey are on page six. But overall, we learned that the vast majority of our families believe that their children are happy, they feel safe, and are making progress. They believe that we communicate effectively and that their identity and culture is respected, acknowledged, and celebrated. We were most proud to learn that 94% of our families feel a sense of belonging at Wallaston School. All the data in our SIP is important, of course, but I think I am most proud of this data. The staff and I firmly believe that this is what education is about. Our students are happy, they feel safe, and are making progress. Our families see this, and they are part of it, and I think this is reflected in all of our assessments. I'd like to take some time this evening to reflect on those assessments, of course, on our school year last year and the goals that we set, but most importantly, I look forward to sharing where we are going during the 2023-2024 school year and the steps we plan to take to get there. During the 22-23 school year, our goal was to ensure that all students demonstrated continuous growth in the areas of English Language Arts, mathematics, and science. We also wanted our school to continue to be a place that supports and promotes diversity, equity, and inclusion by providing social, emotional learning opportunities for all members of the school community, both during and after the school day. We use the MCAS and the MAP assessment to measure our success. As you can see on page 39, we are very proud to report that all tested grades demonstrated growth in the MAP Student Growth Summary Reports from fall of '22 to the spring of '23, and exceeded the national norms in all grades. And on page 38, I am proud to report that the percentage of Wallaston School students who met or exceeded expectations in MCAS exceeded the state in all areas in grade three, in all areas in grade four, and in mathematics, science, and technology engineering in grade five. We are also so proud of the results of our vocal survey and our positive learning environment. The overall school climate score for fourth and fifth-grade students exceeded the state. In addition, Wallaston exceeded the state in the area of engagement, safety, and environment. During the 23-24 school year, our goal-setting reflects our commitment to challenging our students while supporting each individual student's social, emotional learning needs. We again have set goals in the areas of ELA, math, science, and social, emotional learning, equity, diversity, and inclusion. We will continue to use the MAP and MCAS to measure our progress towards these goals. I'd just like to share a couple of highlights from our action steps during this upcoming school year. In ELA, each of our grade-level teams analyzed the assessment data and established areas of focus. As you can see on page 10 this year, our kindergarten team will be focusing on phonemic awareness and phonics fluency. Our first-grade team will be focusing on phonics skills to write complete sentences, and our second-grade team will be working on enhancing reading fluency to improve reading comprehension. Our third, fourth, and fifth-grade teams will be focusing on improvement in written response. We are excited to continue to implement the CKLA program, but we are looking forward to delving deeper into these units and trying to bring our families into this exciting curriculum even more. Some of these CKLA family engagements events will include first-grade students designing a Flag Day celebration as part of their A New Nation unit, or creating an art gallery for their Early World Civilizations Knowledge Unit. We look forward to hosting a Read Around the World celebration on February 7th, and many publishing parties in all of our grades throughout the year, and of course, we'll be inviting our parents in. In mathematics, our teams also analyze their data and identified areas of focus. As you can see on page 17, our kindergarten team will focus on fluently identifying, counting, and comparing numbers, 1 to 20. Our first-grade team will focus on addition and subtraction, fluency, 1 to 20, and our second grade will focus on numbers and operation and measurement and data. Our third, fourth, and fifth-grade teams will also be focusing on measurement data and geometry. We obviously look forward to continuing our use of illustrative math, and most greatly appreciate our new district-wide subscription to Happy Numbers. We also look forward to building our math community and appreciate the recent site-based IM professional development. We look forward to continuing math talks and giving our students more opportunities to use hands-on manipulatives. We want to include more math projects into math instruction, like students can look forward to building a dream house or creating their own Wild West town, and our exciting weekly geometry jamboree, which we're starting this year in fourth grade. In science, we look forward to seeing our fourth and fifth-grade students demonstrate an increase of three RIT points from fall to spring in the MAP District Summary Reports. We look forward to an increase in hands-on learning, an increase in engineering projects. We want to try to connect our science and writing to support our ELA goal. We look forward to our subscriptions to Mystery Science. Engineering is elementary. We're excited for the district kits that were purchased from the Museum of Science for our fourth and fifth-grade students. Our Scholastic magazines give our students real-world applications of science. And then once again, just like in ELA, we want to bring our families in, so we're excited for our first-grade Animals and Habitat projects, our third-grade Animal Fair, our fourth-grade ERTS Natural Hazards Projects, and fifth-grade's Annual Biome Fair. In the area of social, emotional learning, diversity, equity, and inclusion, Wallaston School will continue to be a place that supports and promotes diversity, equity, and inclusion by providing social, emotional learning opportunities for all members of the school community, both during and after the school day. Some of the action steps in this area will include our smores newsletter with the countless opportunities of translation in many different languages, more picture books with a focus on equity, diversity, inclusion, continuing our community circles, continuing with Open Parachute. We took a deep dive into Open Parachute, and we looked at all the different themes, and we talked to the teachers about what themes you think would have the most impact. So we narrowed that down, we're going to start focusing on different themes. Just for example, kindergarten will be focusing on thoughts and feelings, self-regulation. First grade, we're working on self-regulation. Second grade, understanding feelings. Third grade, growth mindset. Fourth grade, bullying and speaking out. And fifth grade, we've chosen worries, anxiety, and resilience. Our teachers will continue their use of seesaw and class dojo for communication. Our student support team, we're going to continue with social groups, lunch groups, and check-ins. Our fifth-grade student council is up and running. Our kindergartens are currently learning about Second Step. We're initiating an online program called Mightier in grades one and two, which is online gaming and interaction with our student support team to show them about coping skills and overcoming challenges. We've invited Boston versus Bullies into our fourth grade. Our after-school programs, we looked at it, we had a lot of new students this year. We thought it would be a great way to start the year with more social activities, so we started a kindness club. We ended up having to add three additional staff members because of the popularity of it. We had board games clubs, which was very great for students who were new to our building and just like a non-academic way to get to know each other and meet other students. Our PTO continues to bring people together. We held a family meetup in September. Our fun run was a huge success and focused on kindness. We had more people ever, than ever, at our trunk-or-treat. And our family vengo night two weeks ago was a huge hit. We look forward to our Winter Wonderland Dance in January, our movie nights, our paint nights, and many more opportunities to bring our community together. I thank you for giving me this opportunity. We're excited for the year ahead and the future successes of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. You're all set, Mrs. Cahill? All set? Mrs. Hoobley?
I just wanted to say, I'm a firm believer, if you don't feel safe and secure in your school, you're not going to learn, so first off. And I was so happy to see that in your survey here, the vocal survey, 100% of the fourth graders said they were happy to be at school, and 100% of the fourth graders said they felt safe at school. Fourth grade is a really tough year. That's a really hard grade to feel happy to be in school for a fourth grader. That's impressive. So thank you so much for all you do. That's great.
Thank you.
Mr. Guttrow.
Hey, Jim. So I was impressed with the improvement across the board on chronic absenteeism. That was...
It's a tough year, too.
Yeah, it was a tough year. On the vocal survey, you know, I noticed in so many different categories, just high marks for how supportive the teachers are on X, Y, Z, so many different areas, which was terrific to see. You did mention commitment to social, emotional. In the vocal data, they did say, there was one that said only 33% feel safe showing their feelings in school. And then there was another category where it said less than 60% feel comfortable telling a teacher about something that's troubling them. I didn't know if you had any thoughts on that.
We noticed that. I think we're trying to do more work with our student support team of giving students avenues to communicate with teachers and not so much in the whole-group setting.
Yeah.
But just, just kind of talking about ways of doing it where students can connect with another teacher. We do the lunch groups, the social groups. I think when we talked to a couple of students, I think it came down to, like, in a whole-group setting, are you comfortable? Which I don't think I would be comfortable either, so we just want to make sure our students know that they have different avenues. It doesn't have to be a whole-class conversation, but it's something that we talked about at school and we are going to work on.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guttrow. Your data is incredible, it really is, all of it, not just the assessment data, but your vocal data, and that student, the parent survey is amazing, it really is amazing. I know that every, every parent in your building feels welcome, and you highlight them on your Facebook... your Facebook page all the time, so I know that they're all trying to do more to get noticed, but you're doing an incredible job, and we couldn't be any more proud. The fact that you have 30% ELs and 13% FELs in your Third Grade, your Fourth Grade, 72% of them met or exceeded expectations in ELA is 73%. It's amazing. It really is amazing.
Very proud. Thank you.
So congratulations to you and your staff and your families. I think you have a wonderful place there, and thank you for coming in. Motion to accept the plan by Mr. Santoro, sent through by Mrs. Cahill, and thank you so much again.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for coming. We're excited to hear your plan.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight, members of school committee, superintendent, SLT. We are excited at this opportunity to present our school improvement plan this evening and for the opportunity to highlight some of the things that are being done at Montclair. Thank you for your ongoing support, and thank you to our Assistant Principal, Mary Hurley, for joining me this evening. Montclair is home to over 400 students who speak over 28 different languages, and we are exceptionally proud this year and especially excited to share with you that Montclair School was a school of recognition with our MCAS accountability status. This is because of our high growth and our high achievement at Montclair School, and Montclair was only one of 66 schools out of over 1,800 schools in the Commonwealth to receive this accountability status this year. So to say we're excited about this is a bit of an understatement. Being part of a school community with an outstanding staff, excellent students, and dedicated families is truly an honor. We would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to our staff. Their passion, dedication, and commitment to nurturing our students, especially academically and socially-emotionally, is a foundation of our success. Montclair students are the heart of our school and the reason we strive for excellence every day. Their determination and their spirit are a source of inspiration to all of us, and our families play a vital role in student success, and we are grateful for their support and for trusting us with their children every day. What makes this accomplishment truly exceptional is the spirit of unity and collaboration that defines our educational community. It's the partnership between students, staff, and families that has led to the overall growth and achievement of our students. While we are excited to celebrate this accomplishment, we know there's always work to be done and always areas in which we can improve. To help us know better where to meet our students, our site-based assessment team got to work at the beginning of the school year and eventually presented MCAS, MAP, DIBELS, and ACCESS data to our staff. I would like to highlight some of the data points found beginning on page four. In kindergarten last year, at the beginning of the 22-23 school year, only 49% of our students were at or above benchmark. By the end of the school year, 89% of our students were at or above. This was an increase of 41%. On the administration of the Access for EL students, 90% of our students in Grades One to Five improved on their overall proficiency in just one school year. 90% of students in Grades One to Five. It's remarkable. It really, really truly is. We're very proud of our students. On the MAP assessment, students showed at or above the average projected RIT growth in all grades and in all subject areas. So when we're looking at multiple measures of student success, we're seeing that they are successful across many different data points. On MCAS, on page five, you will find the breakdown of results. We are pleased to see that in all areas, Montclair exceeded the state's average of students at or above percent correct and had fewer students that were not meeting expectations. I'll give you some examples. In Grade Three ELA, we had 3% not meeting expectations as compared to 16% at the state level not meeting. Grade Four Math, we had 78% of students meeting or exceeding. This is 80, I'm sorry, not 80, 28% higher than the state of 49. And Fifth Grade Science, we had 17% higher, meeting or exceeding expectations in Science. Despite these impressive achievements, we did not meet our academic goals as written in last year's school improvement plan. For the past few years, we've created goals based on the percent correct, which we are finding is not always an accurate representation of students' growth because we are comparing different students from one year to the next. For that reason, we adjusted our ELA and Math/MCAS goals. The new goals can be found on page 12. They also include a MAP goal, so we're using MAP and MCAS. This year, the team also decided to include a DIBELS goal for ELA, so that way we're including all students across our school improvement plan goals. Additionally, each grade-level team created their own learning goals to help meet and support our overall student goals. These goals also fit very nicely into our educator evaluation system, so everything is working together. So we have our edivow goals, our grade-level team goals, our school goals, that all support the district-level team goals, so it's a very nice alignment to all of the goals. At this time, Mrs. Hurley is going to share some highlights and action steps from our Third and Fourth Goals. The Third Goal is our science goal that includes a new component, a science expo, and the Fourth Goal addresses our social-emotional needs of students. How a student feels in school is equally important to what they are learning and how they are achieving.
This year, we are excited to add a science expo to support our science goal. Science expos offer students numerous benefits, including fostering critical thinking, encouraging hands-on learning, promoting creativity, and developing problem-solving skills. They provide a platform for students to explore scientific interests, enhance communication skills through presenting findings, and cultivate a passion for STEM subjects. Additional benefits include nurturing teamwork, boosting confidence, preparing students for future academic and professional challenges. One component of our social-emotional goal is the continued rollout of Open Parachute this year in a more formal manner. Community circles gave students experience in communicating their feelings with one another, which helped make the transition to Open Parachute seamless. Open Parachute lessons provide more tailored assistance and a broader range of resources. We decided to use monthly themes tailored to the needs of our students. These monthly themes can be found on page 23. For example, in October, we focused on friendship as students transitioned into new grades in classrooms. In November, we discussed growth mindsets as the pacing and demands of the curriculum picked up, and in December, the focus is on managing anxiety as the cold, dark days of winter are upon us. The goal of Open Parachute is to teach practical mental health skills to students. The focus is on prevention, giving students an opportunity to practice tools for addressing any current or future challenges that might impact their mental health. Teachers act as facilitators rather than mental health experts, so they can focus on engaging students in the content without the pressure of needing to know any specific mental health information. On page 24, you'll find the schedule of Open Parachute lessons. Thanks to the support of our PE teachers, Allison Griffith and Brian Miller, we were able to create a schedule where they could support the implementation of Open Parachute lessons. These lessons occur when our gym is being used as a cafeteria, so that did not disrupt the regularly scheduled PE classes. This also provides opportunities for our students to build relationships with other trusted adults. All members of the administrative team see the value of this important initiative and provide support, including our guidance counselor, Vic Lamb, school psychologist, Lisa Chien, our nurse, Kailin O'Dwyer, Mrs. Melvesti, and myself.
In closing, we'd like to highlight a few additional initiatives and programs that have had a positive impact on our school community. We are proud of the learning that is happening at Montclair School, but we are equally proud of the social-emotional supports we have established for our students. We are continuing to care for kids beyond the school bell through extended-day offerings and clubs. These clubs are a nice balance of academic supports as well as social supports for students. A list of offerings can be found on page 31 and include clubs such as the famous gardening club that so many of our students participate in, families do as well. New this year, we have established a peer tutoring with students from North Quincy High. I think we have just as many students coming back from North Quincy High as we have students from Montclair School, so it's definitely mutually beneficial on both ends. They're very excited, and as the weeks have gone on, it has grown. We're into two different classrooms now, and we have multiple advisors at our school helping support this initiative as well. This year, new, the Nifty 50 States. We started a kindness club, and we're continuing our student council, that is Fourth and Fifth Grade. All of these clubs fosters a sense of community and positivity, and the effects of these clubs can be found as evidenced in the local vocal survey results. We are also happy to support and be part of district initiatives such as illustrative math and Happy Numbers, CKLA, and Open Parachute again this year. We continue to be grateful for your support with the S'mores communication tool and the International Translation Company to communicate with all of our families. When I tell you we use this on a very daily, very regular basis, it is a game changer for us, so we're so supportive of that, thankful of that, and I know our families are also, because at this point, our families know they can just call and ask for a translator in a language, and it's immediate, so we're always able to communicate with our families. And now that we have S'more and we're implementing that on a weekly basis to communicate with families, families will actually email us back in their home language, and we'll use it to translate, so we can communicate a little bit better. So it's amazing, so thank you for that support. We're lucky to have an extremely supportive PTO that provides countless enrichment opportunities for our students and supports for our staff. Anything that we need, anything our students need, any enrichment opportunities that we go to them with, they are just always happy and willing to support us, so it's a great partnership. And in closing, once again, we'd like to thank our entire school community that understands that our students are so much more than just a score on an assessment. It's important, but at the end of the day, the students are going to remember how we made them feel. And our teachers, our guidance, student support team members, school nurse, cafeteria staff, custodians, office staff, paraprofessionals, and everyone in between, we continue to be humbled by and appreciative of their dedication. We would like to thank everybody here tonight, the mayor, school committee, superintendent, and SLT for your continued support. We're fortunate to be surrounded by community members that care so greatly for our students of this wonderful city. We thank you for your time and welcome any questions and feedback.
I think one of the things that I saw between the Wallaston School right now, the last two, and Montclair, you both have huge diverse populations and great success with your scores. And I wonder, like, when you go open up the MCAS scores and everything, it's like when you get your report card and you're waiting for it to see what the results are, and then you, you know, you chair when they come back really well. But I think that we have to understand, that I think we do understand, is that the success that you have at these schools or any of our schools, it's a collaboration between everyone, right? We have a mayor who's super supportive of our education system. I think the school committee, you know, we're all here to listen to, you know, administration, the leadership, parents, teachers, to try to give our input, our support when we can. And then, just in the individual school, you have great leadership, fantastic teachers, the parent engagement. It's so important to see, and it works because everyone collaborates together to make sure that the kids are having good success in school. And you can see in the parent, we mentioned before, the parent engagement and support at Montclair and Wallaston is phenomenal, and that's helpful. And if they're engaged in that way, I would think that they're engaged with, you know, what's happening in the school and with their students and supporting them, you know, their children. So just a reflection and thank you because it doesn't happen by accident, and it takes, you know, a lot of support and collaboration for the success. So thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Couple of comments and questions. First of all, congratulations on the MCAS achievement that you mentioned from the outset. That's phenomenal. And I was also impressed by the themes of the Open Parachute, you know, the monthly themes. I thought they were spot-on, and the timing of those themes were great. I love to learn every time a principal is in here, the number of languages, so I appreciate the fact that you said you have 28 languages. And so you probably heard the question that I asked, I don't know if it was the last principal or the principal before, but so that makes it a challenge in seeing yourself in the readings, but you still had 65% of Fifth Graders that said that they read a book with people that look similar to them, which is a super challenge when you have 28 languages. So I think it was 50% for Fourth Grade, and I know that it's just something you continue to manage and find that, but kudos.
I have to say thank you to our PTO for helping support that initiative. So one thing that we've been very fortunate and able to do, working with the suggestions from the Citywide EDI team and our PTO and our library support teacher, we actually have monthly themes that we use that are suggested from the Citywide EDI. Our PTO funds additional books, so every month, our library support teacher has a theme, so every student is getting, in addition to the classroom libraries that we've been able to build over the last few years. So I think that is starting to help students see themselves in those books that we're reading. I feel like we still have work to do, but it certainly has improved, and again, it's been a team effort through so many people.
That's great. And then, it looked like you made great reduction on chronic absenteeism for disability and lowest-performing students. Those numbers look good, but then there were a couple of increases with other populations, so it's just something that you continue to manage.
We are meeting monthly with our SST. We've noticed that as well. We feel that since we've been back from the pandemic, it's been much more difficult than pre-pandemic, and so it's something that we are meeting monthly with. We are actually, you know, we joke about it in the office, and we call it the...
Pleasant Pest.
Mrs. Hurley is the Pleasant Pest. And so before I call and say, okay, here's the letter, you're legally required to get your child to school, we have a meeting. If we see that as, you know, medical, the school nurse will reach out and say, what can we do to help and support? If we don't see that there's any medical documentation, Mrs. Hurley will call and say, or Ms. Lamb, our school guidance counselor, will call and say, you know, we really miss your student being in school, you know, what's going on? What can we do to help and support? So we're doing the Pleasant Pest before we go right to the, you know, the more difficult, you know, letters that we need to send out. So we're hoping that that positive approach will have an impact on getting students to school.
I'm sure it will.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're hopeful.
And to that point, you're one of the few schools that is back to the district's pre-pandemic absenteeism. So I mean, you might be the lowest in the whole district at 7.2%, so congratulations and congratulations on the school of recognition. Obviously, lots of good stuff is happening there. Your achievement has been phenomenal, and the information coming from your parents and your students is phenomenal, too. So I just want to thank you for everything you do and everything your staff does, and just keep it up. The school of recognition makes us look good, so we thank you for that as well. And Ms. Cahill, can I have a motion to accept? Seconded by Mr. Santoro, all in favor? Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Have a great holiday season.
Good evening. Thank you so much for coming in.
Good evening.
Go ahead and present.
All right. It is an honor for Justine and I to be here on behalf of the Clifford Marshall community to share our school improvement plan with you. When I think about what defines Clifford Marshall, I think of a warm, compassionate, and welcoming culture and climate. Not including our incoming kindergarten students, we've welcomed 75 new students to Clifford Marshall this year. This makes a warm, welcoming culture an absolute must. The overall spirit of Marshall is one of love, care, and support. This care can be seen in so many ways, from a staff that came together this fall to raise over $30,000 for Dana Farber in honor of some of our colleagues, to a group of parents that wanted to share their DiVale celebration with us by providing DiVale treats for our staff. At Clifford Marshall, there's a collective effort to celebrate student successes, even the small ones. These successes may be tremendous growth on map assessment, excellent achievement on MCAS, or maybe just the student that finally works up the courage to raise their hand, or a student that's able to stay calm and tolerate losing a board game for the first time using that five-fingered breathing technique. We view our students as whole people, and we celebrate all of these successes. Another important part of our strong sense of community is the way we come together for extended-day programs and family engagement events. We have an active PTO and EDI team with a dedicated and diverse group of parents and teachers that are invested and involved in our school. We have a number of fun events throughout the school year that bring our community together, such as bingo nights, family dance night. We have an amazing fun run event that we run with Point Webster Middle School, and we're really excited this year to bring back... back our International Night. This event is an amazing opportunity for us to celebrate the beautiful diversity at our school and share our cultures with one another. As we presented our school improvement plan to families this year and gave them opportunity to give us feedback, the overall message that we received was how they value our school climate and the community engagement activities. Starting on page five of our school improvement plan, you'll see our data and goals reflection. As we looked at our assessment data, we generally see growth in all areas. Our DIBELS composite benchmark scores demonstrated impressive growth from fall to spring in the foundational skills for our students in grades K to 2. We showed strong growth in all areas on the map assessment, though at times we did fall short of our ambitious goals. We're proud to report that on ELA MCAS, we met our growth target, and on 3rd grade MCAS, we scored above the state average. However, we note some challenges on MCAS performance in ELA and 4th grade math. In the area of ELA, we performed best, actually, in tasks that involved writing, such as essays and constructed response. We have identified a need to focus on building vocabulary and working with informational text. In math, we've identified a need for additional instructional focus on numbers and operations. On page nine, you'll see the vocal survey that we've been talking a lot about tonight. That's the reflection, and the full results are on page 31. The results show that students have very positive feelings about our school and identify a strong, positive school climate. 97% of students report that their teachers care about them as a person. When we looked at that report to find some areas that need improvement, we found that only 67% of our students reported reading books in class that include people who are similar to me, which is, again, has come up a few times tonight. This is an area that we've been working on, and as you'll see in our action steps, we're going to continue to work on that. As we look at our ELA goals, we have targeted areas of growth for all of our students. Grade K to 2 focused heavily on building foundational reading skills. Like any foundation, the strength of these skills directly affects future reading success. We want to carefully monitor these students and ensure that they build these important skills. Students in grades K to 2 will all get an hour of foundational reading skills every day. They also will have a win block. This win block is dedicated to meeting more specific student needs, such as filling gaps in foundational skills, or maybe building language and vocabulary skills. It's also an opportunity for, to enrich students by providing access to more complex and challenging texts for those that are ready for that. Students in grades K and 1 will all receive the Hegarty Phoenemic Awareness Program and will continue to build strong vocabulary and background knowledge by using the CKLA knowledge portion. We carefully dedicate this time for all students, and we believe that providing strong tier one instruction will provide grade level foundational skills. As we look at the upper grades, we know that we need to continue to build some of these foundational skills while at the same time, we build their capacity to read and write more complex text. Our focus on informational text will allow us to continue to provide strong, grade level instruction, building knowledge and vocabulary for all. We'll read complex texts and build students' ability to respond in writing. We'll use digital resources and small group intervention to provide support for students that need to continue to fill those gaps in foundational skills, while at the same time, providing them with the scaffolding that they need to access grade level standards.
For our math goal, we have targeted numbers and operations as our instructional focus. We understand that strong number sense is the foundation of students' math ability. The IM curriculum uses problem-based learning to teach students conceptual understanding of math. Problem-based learning embraces students' ability to productively struggle, meaning that when a problem is challenging, students have a toolkit of strategies to solve even the most complex problems. By focusing on strong number sense and the conceptual understanding of math operations, teachers can build capacity for student mathematical processing and thinking. We will support, no, sorry, we will support students through action steps that include using happy numbers in the first in math program, both of which support students' foundational skills and fluency. We are particularly excited about receiving a DESI grant for, providing our 4th grade students with access to ST Math program. ST Math uses puzzles and non-routine practice problems to teach students conceptual understandings across all standards. This system uses very few words, which makes ST Math accessible to all student populations, especially our EL learners. At all grade levels, we will continue to use our math interventionalists for push-in, pull-out, and co-teaching support. These supports will help students to achieve their highest potential in areas of numbers and operations. In addition to ongoing professional development in the implementation of CKLA and IM, we would like to highlight the important engagement strategy you will see throughout our school improvement plan. We are intentionally focusing on students, on increasing students' opportunities to respond. This simple strategy is impactful in keeping students engaged in learning and can be used across all content areas with any curriculum. What does it look like? Well, rather than students raising their hands and taking turns answering, they all have an opportunity to respond. Students could be writing on a whiteboard or in a notebook, they can use hand signals like giving a thumbs up, or thumbs down, or same same when they agree. They could be turning and talking to a partner, or whisper yelling all the answers at once. By giving students the opportunity to respond, they are all practicing a skill, not listening to one student who has the turn. This strategy is simple yet powerful. As we met at a staff, we talked about the current social emotional needs of our students and looked closely at the vocal survey as we identified self-regulation as an area for many of our students. We determined that more frequent, direct instruction of self-regulation skills would be one impactful change that would help students emotionally, emotional well-being and their behavior. If we can increase students' ability to decrease impulsivity, manage their feelings, and give them strategies for self-control, we will see an overall improvement in student behavior and self-esteem. In addition to our current PBIS program and ongoing use of community circles, all students will receive bimonthly open parachute lessons with a specific focus on teaching and reinforcing mindfulness and self-regulation strategies. I would like to thank, take this opportunity to thank students and the staff members, as well as our community members, for welcoming me to Clifford Marshall. It's been a great start to our school year, and thank you all for listening, and we'll accept questions now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Cahill?
I, I think that, I mean, again, your population is so diverse, right? I mean, that's incredible. And when we talk about social emotional, and like managing their emotions and stuff, do you find that if the kids are younger and they're having language barriers, that that, that probably contributes a lot to their frustrations during the day, I would think, right? So I think that that, you know, we do a lot of work to help the kids with their language skills and help them to, to be able to express themselves and do the work. But I also think that we have to look at that as probably a big reason, it's not so much that it's a, an emotional thing, it's more of a frustration, you know? And do you see that in the classrooms with, with your students?
Absolutely. That can definitely be a challenge for some of our students. So, you know, we try to provide visuals, we're often use, go relying on our phones for Google Translate. Our students also often help each other out and will translate for one another in the moment. Of course, we have translation lines. And, you know, we have had students come in that we were aware might have some difficult time adjusting, and we've been able to rely on our family liaisons. We recently had a family liaison come to Marshall knowing that we had a student starting to, to help with that transition for their first, you know, few hours even, just to have somebody, an adult, that can walk them through the school, welcome them in their first language, and help, you know, to tell them who they can rely on, how they can get help if they need it. So, I mean, it is a challenge for those kids, and we know that, but with visuals and, and support, it, it does help.
And you're doing, you're doing great work. So with, with all those challenges, you know, because even the parents don't have the skills, the language skills to be able to support their kids. That's why the liaisons, which, you know, you've brought on even prior to me being here, have been an amazing addition for the, for the students. But that's good. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Santoro?
Thank you. Just one question. I think, excuse me, 75 people who have arrived, how many new to the country?
You know, I don't, I don't know how, I mean, I would say about half. I, I would guess about half would be new to the country, yeah.
Thank you for accepting that challenge and working so hard, and welcome.
Thank you.
Where are you from?
I taught in Squanam previously.
At Squanam?
Yep.
Mr. Gattuso?
Thank you. A great presentation. So the principal from Montclair was here and said that they had 28 languages in their school. I imagine you probably have the same or more, right?
I think our last count was 34.
34 languages, yeah. And, and so that's why I was impressed to see in the vocal data that 67% of the students said that they see themselves in the reading. So I think that's a tribute to the folks that are participating in, in the book selection, and, and that was great to see. The, you know, I want to say, Marshall's a great school, great PTO, you have great families there. I had been to the International Night, so if it's as good as the past, it, it's going to be absolutely, it's, it's, it's like a gala event. It's like incredible. You go into different rooms and it's different cultures, and it's really, it's really crazy. Two additional questions. One, while your numbers, I think two years ago, were, were pretty staggering in terms of chronic absenteeism, I did notice that across all but one category, there was significant decreases between like 5 and 18%, which you must feel pretty good about. And then there was only one category that there was like a 10% increase in. I, I didn't know if you wanted to comment on that?
You know, I think chronic absenteeism has been a challenge, I, I think, as Renee had mentioned, especially since, you know, COVID, because there are some extended absences still in regards to that. But our philosophy is at the elementary level especially, it's really families we need to work with and try to support. The kids are young, and they don't necessarily get to determine that. So we do really work hard to try to make connections with the families and provide support, and just find out, are there obstacles? You know, what, what are the challenges, and is there any way we can support it? And I think, I think trust also goes a long way too, in trying to build that trust with families. So that's an ongoing effort on our behalf.
And then, last question, I know Mrs. Lebo is putting all of the facilities' needs in the facilities subcommittee so that we could talk about them collectively, but I did want to ask, why a camera? That's the only one that, that I, I mean, I know that there's cameras at a few schools, but have you had vandalism? Is that the need for?
There has been some, yes, yes. There has been some.
And is that recent?
It, it's...
Inconsistent? Is it like window breakage? Is it graffiti?
Yeah, it's, I would say inconsistent, tends to go with the weather. When the weather gets warmer, the vandalism kind of spikes up a little bit. I think we have that area in the back of the school that's relatively hidden from the street, and it's maybe an opportunity for kids to hang out, and sometimes there's some evidence left behind, so.
At many schools, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gattuso. So I just have a quick comment. I'm so glad to hear you talk about what that family liaison did. I think it's so important for people to understand, really, that's the best explanation I've ever heard of why they're necessary. When you have a brand-new student in a new building, and there's an actual adult who speaks their primary language, who can walk them through, I mean, I'm sure we don't have 28 languages yet. But we can build, I mean, you know, when we have a large enough population, we can do that. And it's, can you imagine how frightening it would be for a kid that didn't have that? And the mother, the parents barely spoke, so, you know, sometimes it's a child translating, so I, I think it's, it's a great, it's a great visual for me to always remember that. Your data is amazing, it really is. I know it was ambitious, but you did very, very well. My interest in your mobility, though, that you had 70 kids move in, and I think the other challenge for your school is that you'll have an equal number of kids move out, because it does have a big churn there. Mainly because it's apartments and stuff, there's a lot of apartments there. So churn, a churn issue is, it's, it's an issue. So you can work so hard with the little one, and they're gone. And you have another little one that you're working with, so I, I, really, thank you to your staff, all of your staff, the family liaisons certainly deserve a shout-out from all of us. Your plan is amazing, your school is amazing, it really is amazing. I'm so glad you joined them. It's a great place, and I'm sure you'll love it there.
I am, thank you.
Yeah. So a motion to accept the plan by Mr. Santoro, seconded by Mrs. Cahill. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You've been here a long time, Mr. Cahill.
Quite all right. It's nice to hear my colleagues go to and see what's happening in the other school, so I appreciate that. I just want to start by thanking the school committee and the superintendent's leadership team for all the support that they constantly show for the principals, the schools, and the staff and students of Quincy Public Schools. It's, it's really appreciated to work in the system like this, having been in two other systems before. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Thanks also for the opportunity to present to you tonight, so I can share all the wonderful things happening at Bernazani this year. And if you don't mind, I'd like to start with two stories about kids that really speak volumes about the kids at Bernazani and what we're doing and, and what that looks like. It was indoor morning drop-off, because it was a cold day, and I stand at the door, welcome every kid in as they come in, and we have, actually, the first time in my career, triplets this year, kindergarten triplets. And they're small, so they use the railing to go up those, those four stairs in the back of the school, and then a 5th grader was coming in at the same time. Now, we have a kindergarten and 5th grade buddies program where they read to each other, and it's, you know, develops friendships in the school. Instead of the kindergartners walking by, the 5th graders being afraid, it's like high fives, and they're with each other all the time. So he came up and he stumbled a little, and he bumped into, what, the first girl, and then he said, "Oh, I'm so sorry." And then each triplet, his hand on the back of them, like, "Well, you go in ahead of me?" And the triplet's dad was standing there watching it, and like, "This is great, this is exactly what I want in my school." And then the other story was just Monday, a little boy had chipped his tooth, so I went down to speak with him, and there was a substitute that day. I said, "Oh, did you tell the substitute so that, you know, if he needed to come talk to me, he, he knows it's okay?" And he said, "No, I didn't." I said, "Do you want me to tell him?" He said, "Yeah." So I told the substitute, he's a great guy, I said, "You know, he can come see me anytime, he's such a great kid." And the substitute said, he said, "Peter, this morning, I wanted to give a bear paw. We have a reward system for peace builders, we're the bears, so we give out bear paws when the kids are doing the right thing." But I didn't have any on me, because I'm a substitute, and then a minute later, that boy came in and he said, "I just went to my locker, you, you can give him one of mine." Oh my goodness, I know, right? Yeah. So he said, "No way, I'll find a bear paw. You're keeping your bear paw." But it's just, yeah, it's just, it's a great school, and such a, such a pleasure to, to work there. So if we can start on page five, I'll walk you through some of the data. So about five years ago, we began using Edwin Report 301 as an indicator for our strengths and weaknesses. This report shows us how many percentage points we are ahead of or behind the state for each standard, and on assessment days, we, we just use that to take a look where we are compared to the state, and then that's what we work on for, for our goals and action steps for the improvement plan. If we're lagging behind the state, we obviously consider that a weakness, and if we're ahead of the state, we consider that a strength, and then we can improve from there. So I've highlighted areas in the plan in which we are well above the state for your perusal in the data reflection, and some of them are 32 percentage points above the state, and the, and the 20 percentage points above the state, and we really, really celebrate that. And then the, the points where we're below the state, we can, we can work on that, and we have targeted improvement based on that. At this point, if you could please turn to page six, I'm happy to report that we exceeded all of our goals in ELA, math, and science at each grade level, with the singular exception of 4th grade ELA. We were very close in 3rd and 5th grade ELA, and I point that out, and that's exactly why we chose to keep the same measure in RIT points. It's, it's similar to last year's plan, and I just want you to know, we, we looked at that, and we're, we looked at it over the last couple of years since we've had MAP, and those really are the numbers that we think are, because we're close or just below in some of them. So, so that's why we kept that, that measure in RIT for MAP. Our students made progress in 4th grade ELA, but did not meet our expectation of growth, so they did not meet the target. But we were so pleased to celebrate this as a staff, and we know that these SMART goals really are achievable. On page seven, you'll find our vocal survey results, and I wanted to share our high percentage categories with you tonight. We, we really are pleased with our results from the vocal survey. We're especially pleased about the questions that focused around teachers supporting students and students feeling safe at our school. Another area of strength that came up was the fact that students feel good about teachers protecting them from bullying. I'm going to share three of the topics right now. Teachers accept me for who I am. If I tell a teacher my classmate is being bullied, my teacher will help that person. And my teachers help me succeed with my schoolwork when I need help. These were the three statements that we received 100% of. when I need help. These were the three statements that we received a hundred percent of student votes on, and we just loved that. We were pleased that our students feel this way about their school. And those three topics in particular, we loved that they feel cared for as a person, they feel protected as a classmate, and then supported as a student. It's like, really, the whole piece of school, and to have hundred percents on those was a nice celebration. It also speaks volumes about the amazing staff at Bernazani, working with those kids. Some categories that we're also proud of for our student ratings were "my teachers care about me as a person," "my teachers are proud of me when I work hard in school," "my teachers support me even when my work is not my best," I like that one, "I feel safe at our school," and "teachers support students who come to class upset," which speaks to the programs that we're using to support social-emotional learning. Okay, everybody talked about this, but once again, the results for "I read books in class that include people who are similar to me" came out as fifty percent, and we had to just stop as a school and take a look at that, and it came up in our conversations, too. That sentence to an adult, we know exactly what they're asking, like, "people who are similar to me," but we finally were like, "We've worked so hard on this the last three years." But because of that, we came up with a new plan for last year, because it was an area of weakness last year as well. So, the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Team at Bernazani, it consists of both parents and PTO and our teaching staff. So, PTO offered to fund one book, one school program for the school, which we'd had done in the past, but this year, we're changing to each month. So what we're going to do is, we're picking a different topic for EDI for each month. We're also switching up the books that we're buying. So we found that when we, in the past, we did one book, one school. You pick a book, the lower-grade teachers read it to the kids, the upper-grade level teach, kids read the book. But what we did is by topic, and then we got Lexile level for each grade level. So it's one book, really, per grade, per month. Not one book, one school, but it's just more appropriate for the, for the students in those grades, and then they can experience the full range of topics of EDI. So that, we're starting that this year. The books stay in the classroom, so they'll have books similar to them as they move forward. So we're hoping that works, and it's a, it's a much appreciated funding from my great PTO. I have to say, too, I really appreciate the support of our fantastic PTO, which has remained wonderful through the many changes that I've seen in my long time here at Bernazani. It is, it is interesting, because there's a new PTO election every year, so you never know what's going to happen, but it's just, I've been so blessed my entire time there. And so this one-book-one-school initiative is almost the entirety of our EDI goal. On page nine, you'll see the beginning of our goals section. We made one big change this year, and Emily, you were talking about this earlier. As a staff, we love to use the RIT points from MAP as an indicator, because it tells us how much growth the students in front of us have made. So we have integrated learning teams three times a year. We just have mini ILTs just to check in this week. And because we can use the MAP data, we can see the kids in front of us improving or declining throughout the year, switch up the literacy groups, switch up what the teachers are using for groupings in the classrooms, and then really use that data more effectively than the one MCAS data from the previous year, different groups of kids. It just didn't make sense to be measuring that way. With that being said, we still use MCAS data to look at the school trends, but in terms of teaching the students, the RIT points are much, much more, more helpful. Therefore, we've excluded MCAS goals for our targets this year, and we're just going with MAP. Next, I'd like to speak a little bit about our social-emotional goal on page thirteen. This year, we focused our attention on the Open Parachute Program. So our teachers feel very comfortable with restorative justice circles. We also use elements from PBIS, and we've been doing the Peace Builders Program almost my entire time there, to help our students with their social-emotional learning. What we need as a staff is a greater dedication to the incredible tool that is Open Parachute. So these lessons will be utilized in two different ways this year at Bernazani. A series of lessons will be chosen each month to review by each grade level. In addition, as issues arise within the classroom, the teachers will then use additional lessons when it's appropriate. For instance, we recently used the "What to Do When I'm Feeling Left Out" lesson to address these feelings that some of our students were experiencing. These lessons begin with a documentary-style video of actual students explaining their experiences, and then it's so well-received by our students. The lesson then shifts into class discussion so that the teachers can enable team-building within their classroom. And since our teachers are so skilled in restorative justice circles from all the practice, these class discussions are accomplished with expert practice, and the class really becomes a unit and a team. On page seventeen, we've outlined our professional development plan, which focuses mainly on the two new curriculums, illustrative math and core knowledge language arts, or CKLA, and we also allowed time for continuous training and Sabbath realize for our science teachers. Time is also carved out to dedicate to our EDI and social-emotional goals. Next, if you could please turn to page nineteen, I wanted to highlight our extended-day offerings. Last year, when we spoke, we did not have a very large offering of programs before or after school, and so we worked on this as a staff, and I'm proud to present this variety of offerings to our students this year. Our students love these clubs, and they're so happy to stay an extra hour at their school. On page twenty-one, it's my pleasure to bring you through a page that is very close to my heart. I became an elementary school teacher for many, many reasons, but one important reason is the feeling of community, connectedness, and pride that small children get from their elementary school. Being principal at Bernazani and having an amazingly supportive PTO that shares my vision has been a wonderful experience. I want to reiterate that sometimes it's difficult, as new PTO executive boards are elected each year, to keep a cohesive vision, but each iteration of our PTO executive board has been extremely child-focused. And so far this year, we've had a night out for parents to simply socialize and get to know one another at the brick and beam. We had our first-ever Haunted Hallway event, which was so aptly named, because Bernazani is literally just one big hallway, so the Haunted Hallway is easy to set up. A book fair, family night, and next week is our Shops at Winter Wonderland, and that's an opportunity for our students to shop for their family members. I truly appreciate the tireless work that our PTO does for both the students of Bernazani and the entire staff at Bernazani. Their support and dedication is key to what we do at our school. In conclusion, I wanted to express my utmost respect and admiration for the staff at Bernazani. I've always said, when I talk to my friends outside of education, that the most important decision I make is who is standing in front of the kids, you know, who's in there with those kiddos. And our staff not only has the best interest of each student at heart emotionally, but they also plan so carefully each and every day to ensure the academic success of every child who comes through our doors. And when I say staff, I mean everyone, including the cafeteria, cafeteria staff, the custodial staff, and I give a lot of tours to prospective parents who are thinking about open enrollment, and whenever I give tours to those prospective families, I always include a visit to Carl and Doug in the custodial office. It's just, everybody's included there, you know, and they're so friendly, and the parents love that, and the school would not enjoy the same reputation and success without everybody who works there. So my deepest thanks goes to my entire staff. Finally, I want to thank our students. Being greeted by hugs each morning as I stand outside with the kids is something that not many people get to start their day with at their jobs, and it's truly appreciated to spend my days with the wonderful children at Bernazani. They make our school great, and my final and most important thanks go to them. And at this point, I'd welcome any questions.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Cahill?
I'm just going to say, we'll celebrate all the good work that you're doing at Bernazani. Love the school, you know, close to my heart, with my kids all went. And you know who's celebrating the most, though, is the mom of those three triplets who finally are in school. And I know her, I know her, so I'm sure that must have been felt like forever, but thank you for everything. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Gattuso?
I, too, have a Bernazani bias as a proud alum. Many, many years ago, when it was Furnace Book. And you do have an incredible PTO, and I'm impressed with the family engagement activities. They look super cool. They look like things that I would totally participate in. So thank you for, you know, listening last year and doing that. And then everything you said in the vocal data, like, you go throughout the vocal data, and it says that the teachers are the stars. You know what I mean? Whether, whether it's solving problems or social-emotional issues, or preventing bullying, and the list goes on. It was, it was really impressive. And then, you know, chronic absenteeism is still an issue, you know, that you got to work on. So I didn't know if you had anything to add about any of those topics?
Yeah, I've been working more closely with Chrissy Shaw this year, our attendance officer. She's such, she's so busy, but she's influential in that. So it's just about getting the letters out ahead of time and communicating with those parents and having them in for meetings, is what we've been focusing on this year, and getting it done earlier than usual.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gattuso. I have to just reiterate with my colleagues, I said, "I'm so grateful to see that extended-day stuff. It really looks wonderful." And you, Mr. Gattuso is right, your, your family engagement activities, the fact that you actually focus just on the parents a couple of times a year, they love that. They really do. They love being that social with each other and getting to know each other, so. And that brings them back for all of the other stuff that you want them there for. You have great kids and a great school. Your scores are wonderful, and I think your staff is amazing. When you see that vocal data, that really is a tribute to them. So thank them all for us as well. And I'll entertain a motion by Mr. Santoro to accept your plan, seconded by Mrs. Cahill. I, we all say aye, and thank you very much, Mr. DeYoung.
Thank you all.
Motion to adjourn?
Thanks, everybody.